As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda our president can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ron Brooks.
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch.
Here.
Steve Chambers.
Here.
Todd Corain.
Here.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Menard.
Here.
Rachel Pressy.
Here.
Good evening. This is, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, April 27, 2021, is now called to order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's orders respect the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by remote participation of the public only. Although some members of the planning board are physically located in the selectmen's meeting room at town hall, those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133-747-477. The public can join via computer at GoToMeeting.com backslash join backslash 133-747-477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Accordingly, those members of the planning board, employees, and members of the public who participate, be aware that other people may be able to see you, and please take care not to share your screen. Anything broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will get on the line of members inviting each by name, provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. All members have, after all members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board meeting. First up on our agenda, 7:00 a.m., 7:00 P.M., is Applicant Modern Structures Incorporated, a definitive subdivision plan for three building lots, construction of roadway, and related infrastructure improvements on property located at 92 Tinker Hill Road, map 59, parcel five. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion, John.
May I have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor? Nicholas Lynch.
Aye.
Ron Brooks.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
Todd Corain.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. The meeting is now open. Is there anyone from the applicant here at this meeting?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
My name is David Sadowski. I'm a civil engineer, and I'm involved with the team that's put together this definitive subdivision.
Okay, this is in peer review now, but we can go through a few basic things. We can't make a decision tonight until we get the peer review comments, and you've addressed them. Are you aware of that?
No.
Well, we send our plans out for peer review, they make comments, they send them to the town, the town gets them to you, you respond, and if the peer review agrees with your responses, then we go through everything, and we make a motion to either approve or disapprove. But I'm sure some people have questions.
Chairman, if I could continue, my name's David Sadowski again. I just know that almost a month ago, we submitted, along with $9,600 in fees and $3,300 in review fees, this subdivision, three lot, dead-end subdivision. We thought we'd be able to answer questions on it tonight and move forward, because we've never got any response about any review.
We haven't received a response back from Graves as of yet.
How much of a time limit do you have once the submission is made to the town?
Once we open the public hearing, if you close the public hearing, I believe it's 45 days a decision would have to be made, so that's the only real-time limit.
Well, we can continue the meeting, and that doesn't affect the 45 days, correct?
Correct.
We're ready to present, I guess, so we could hear some feedback.
Sure.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, basically, my client, Modern Structures, has already bought two of the lots along Tinker Hill and has started the Form A procedure. He's designed two, we've designed two septic systems. We have houses under construction now. One of them went before conservation, one of the lots that was approved, both houses are being built on now. When this area of the town was developed, Land Planning put together a plan that went before your board and was given a Form A plan that allowed for two or three different areas where 50-foot accessways could go to the back of the property. Instead of us moving forward with some type of a loop subdivision with 10 or 12 lots, we decided to use the last area to go in and make three lots that were, all of them had a minimum of five acres of upland on them, which would allow, which would allow us only to have three building lots instead of the 12. It would make estate-type lots, and it would greatly not tax the infrastructure of the town whatsoever, considering the minimal amount of lots that we're proposing. The road is to remain private, not public, would be, we've asked for a few waivers, one would be pavement width from the 24 down to 20 feet, plus binder, so it would almost be a 22-foot pave. Sidewalks, there's no sidewalks anywhere on Tinker Hill, we're asking for a waiver there. There's a minimum, there's a maximum requirement of 8% for the roadway, we're asking to go up to 9% because of the amount of fill that has to be put in on the backside of the cul-de-sac. We also, there's a requirement of all trees over 12-inch diameter, there's over 27 acres here, so we're asking for a waiver there, that's section 3.3.2.1Q of your requirements. And also, we're looking at the requirement of each individual lot in the proposed subdivision be connected to town water. Every single lot coming up Tinker Hill currently has wells, we've just put two wells in on those two lots I talked about earlier. The existing Proudie House that was out there is on a well, and the house across, there's lots across from the Soleron Wells. So basically, those are the five waivers we're asking for. We have a cul-de-sac under 600 feet.
Excuse me, let me stop you right there. You're asking for waivers to hook up to the town water, and you're already drilling wells. Aren't you putting the cart before the horse here? You're building houses without an access road approved, again, you're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't got the design review back.
Sir, those are Form A lots your board created.
Pardon me?
Those are Form A lots your board created, there's no cart before the horse here at all. Your board signed off on these lots two years ago. We're simply building on them.
You talked about the A&R lots or the subdivision lot?
A&R lots that your board already signed on. Were you on the board at that time, Mr. Chairman?
I was, and I don't recall this at all.
Land Planning brought the plan forward, and your board seemed to sign off on the A&R, very simply building on the A&R lots.
These two, these two are the two new A&R lots by the same company.
These two are two A&R lots?
Yep.
So two lots?
Lots five and lot six. Their addresses are already given out by the town as 90 and 94 Tinker Hill. They've been through the system, and they've been processed.
Yeah, these two.
Here and here?
Yep.
This is 94, this is 90. Well, that's those two lots, that's got nothing to do with you splitting the lots into five acres, so it's not an approved subdivision plan, and these lots have not been approved under A&R. Just the front two lots were approved. Cart before the horse.
Sir, that's what I'm talking about, where we put the wells on the approved lots. I don't think you're hearing correctly.
You already said you're building on the lots that you just sent in. You didn't say you were building the two front lots.
No, I did not. I said that we're, excuse me, excuse me, I said that we're building on the two Form A lots currently, and now we're trying to look to develop the back three. That's why we brought a subdivision forward, sir.
Okay.
There's no cart before the horse here whatsoever. We don't have wells on any land that hasn't been approved as a buildable lot by your planning board, probably with your signature on the plan.
I'm sure it is. Well, you didn't explain yourself very well. You just said it, two lots we're already putting in wells and building on, you didn't identify that it wasn't any of these three lots you want to get approved here.
Maybe I spoke too quickly, I apologize for that.
You didn't speak too quickly, you didn't.
Basically said that we had.
Go ahead.
I'm done with my presentation, sir.
Okay, does anyone on the planning board have any comments?
John, it's Ronnie.
Ron.
Could you repeat, the applicant, Mr. Sadowski, could you repeat the part about the pavement width throughout your subdivision?
Yes, through the chair, there is a requirement of a 24-foot width on a dead-end road. What we're proposing is 20-foot from berm to berm, plus a foot underneath each berm, so we'd be, we'd be actually paving 22 feet wide, and then the berm would sit on either side, so we're asking for a four-foot reduction from the 24 feet to the 20. Plus, we put berms, of course, on the roadway.
Is this, is each one of these three lots going to have a frontage on the cul-de-sac, their own frontage, and the road that you're talking about being paved, the driveway through each one of these houses?
The driveways to each one of the houses will come off the cul-de-sac itself. This roadway is just merely the accessway path, the existing, there's two other existing lots on Tinker Hill, we'd be going by those two houses at 20-foot wide, then we'd get into the big bowl with 75-foot radius, and our driveways would come off the cul-de-sac itself. Each individual lot would have its own driveway.
But only two of the lots, it appears, come off the cul-de-sac with paved driveways. The first lot on the left comes off before the cul-de-sac. According to your plan.
That is correct, sir.
Any else, Ron?
Nope.
Anyone else?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Ron. Does anybody else on the board have any comments?
John, this is Steve.
Go ahead, Steve.
So he mentioned the width of the road, and then the grading is trying not to bring in as much fill, but, so I don't know the topography right now, but I'm assuming they have to remove that area to put the road in and then grade that, and they still won't be able to achieve the 8% grade?
Correct. The grade drops on the roadway centerline roughly 30 feet. Little more than 30 feet, 32 probably, judging by their profile.
And then, and then the road width, I mean, they're not restricted due to any structure, and they have the ability to actually make that the 24-foot requirement? Is there, is there a grading concern? Is that why, or just because it's not consistent with what's in the neighborhood?
Through the chair, I don't want to overspeak anybody, through the chair, it's, I mean, Tinker Hill itself narrows down to 17 feet to 19, 20 feet, its entire width, coming up to our location. That's basically the reason it's consistent with the roadway width of the other roads, or excuse me, of the other width pavement on Tinker up to this point.
And that's your reasoning for requesting the waivers, consistency, not any other concerns with topography there, or digging?
Again, through the chair, I don't want to overspeak. Obviously, with us having to cut as it keeps on dropping back, we'll be cutting more and more into the bank and creating more of, more of a depressed road going through there. The wider the pavement goes, the harder it's going to be to grade next to the subdivision lots that have already been approved, the Form As. We do have grading easements that were created by your board or allowed by your board along the roadway before we get out into the area where our lots exist. We can grade into the people's lots. Anna Baker, lives, Billy Anna Baker's at 102 Tinker, and Jessica Roy is at 106 Tinker, will be going by both of their houses with this roadway.
John, I have a question.
Go ahead, Steve, sorry.
So also, I believe, and I just want to confirm, you stated that the road will remain private?
That's correct.
John, I'm done, thank you.
Go ahead, Ron.
John, as I'm looking at the plan, and I see the roadway coming in between Anna Baca and Roy, and I see something that's got 110 feet of frontage here between the two radii, the two radii, where is the 20-foot, the road of 20-foot, a 22-paved with only 22 base and with the berm on top of that on each side? Where's that 20-foot road?
22-foot, I believe, runs between, you see the granite bound just above the 110-foot width, Ron, granite bound on each side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
22 feet, if I'm not mistaken, that runs all the way up to hit the radius of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. It just looks funny when you see the 110 feet here, and it looks so wide, that it cuts down to that from 110 to 20, but, all right, if that's where it is, and the applicant would like to pave 22 feet and set the berm a foot on each side, so that the road would only be 20 feet inside.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And as Steve just asked, if we wanted it to be 24 feet wide, the full 24, is there enough land to do that?
Through the chair, yes, there is.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on the board have anything to ask?
Mr. Chair, this is Todd, can I ask a question or two?
Absolutely, Todd.
Thank you. So through the chair, just building off of what my two colleagues had asked about, do you have the width should the board decide that they would like a sidewalk on one side?
Through the chair, yes, there's width. Let me ask the question, though, is the standard sidewalk four-foot wide or is it five-foot wide?
I would defer to Mr. Menard for that.
I believe it's five-foot wide. I believe it is also, Todd.
Mr. Chair, if I could continue to answer the question, if, if the board moved to have the pavement go to 24 feet with berms and then a five-foot sidewalk, that would greatly inhibit with the grading to go and buy the two existing lots with Anna Baca, I guess that's how you pronounce it, and with Jessica Roy, if we had to do 24 plus a five. And we also have a underground utility trench on one side that's going into, it's just there, with the grading, the way it drops off the 30, 32 feet by the end of the cul-de-sac, coming down past these lots, the 20 feet makes it so much easier to get finished grading, not to extend far into these existing lots, so the people already have lawns, and they have other things in those areas where this grading easement, the temporary 30-foot wide grading easement exists. It was almost put in so that the subdivision could be built at the same time the Form A plans were being built on, then everything would be settled. I mean, there's some finished grading from one of the septics, where Jessica Roy extends down into that grading easement. If you walked, I don't know if anyone walked down the centerline that was staked for the proposed subdivision, it would be, it would be the lot to the left at 106, there's grading and fill grading that holds back the septic that extends into this grading easement that's temporary for the roadway. That's why we tried to keep it at 20, have the roadway go in, and not ask for a sidewalk. It would help with our grading system. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. One other question, has, has your engineer done a review of a turning radius for fire apparatus to come down to 20 feet and then be able to make a turn in the cul-de-sac and exit back out?
Yes, they have, and we actually contacted Summit Engineering. Summit is the one that put together this vertical curve, as well as the turning radius, inside the cul-de-sac itself at 75 feet, so that it would allow fire apparatus to be able to spin around and come back out.
So if it's okay before you come back, before the board, can you provide us with the copy of the auto-turn analysis?
Certainly.
Entering off of Tinker Hill Road and then proceeding down, making the turnaround the cul-de-sac and exiting back out?
Oh, I certainly will.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all I have at this time.
Anyone else on the board have any questions? Being done, is there anyone from the public have any questions? Mr. Anna Baca, do you have any questions? I see you're online, I see that you're a neighbor as well.
Not really at this time.
Okay. I have a few questions. I see that you have the 30-foot wide easement on either side of the road, which gives you an 84-foot wide total easement with the road included, if I'm not mistaken, 30 and 20 and 30. And I would think that the town would require proof of an easement agreement with both homeowners before they would approve this, and as far as the road width goes, that's probably going to be up to Bill Coyle, the DPW director, and I'm pretty sure he's going to ask you to do 24 feet. The 22 feet doesn't count because your berm's on top of a foot of each side of it, so they're looking at the travel away between curbs, which would be 20 feet your way, it'd be 24 feet their way, which would make your total paving underneath 26 feet wide. As far as grading going into either, in between these two lots, are these lots lower or higher than your roadway? Because there's no spot grades, and I can't.
Chairman, David S-
Yeah, I can't really read the.
Mr. Chairman, David Sadowski, David Sadowski again. This roadway would be lower than, than either lot on either side of it, Jessica Roy or Anna Baker. Also, these, these temporary easements were created when you signed up on the Form A plan.
Yeah, I can.
They were asked for at that time.
I can sign off on anything, but if the homeowner doesn't give you the easement, you don't have an easement. I don't have the right to give you an easement, and we have to look into that, by the way.
Yeah.
We have to do some research on that, whether or not we granted easements. It's shelling on our practice to grant an easement on someone else's property, we can't do that legally.
Mr. Chairman, I think that at the time, the people didn't own the lots, the lots were owned by the Proudie family at the time, and the lots were created with the easement, and when the people bought in, the easement already existed, signed off by your board and recorded the registry of deeds, and I think it'd be part of their deed. So I think it would stand, but perhaps with some legal help, we'll be able to find out for sure.
Yeah, that I don't know. My other questions are, is your drain line going to be A, DS pipe, D as in David, or ABS, B as in Boyd? Because you have both on the plan.
Mr. Chairman, it should be ABS, as in Boyd.
And then the drain's only going to have roughly three feet of cover at the manholes, judging by the grades on the plans?
Which manhole, sir? Manhole one or manhole two?
You can pick either one, they're about the same.
Well, manhole one's got a rim at 688, and it's got an inverted 683.
Minus 15 inches.
688, 84. Right, and it's 688, 84. It's almost, it's almost six feet from the 83 up to the 89, minus a 15 inch, which is 1.25 feet, which would leave you 4.75 feet, roughly four, over four and a half feet of cover.
Well, in DCB one, station 3+0, your elevation is 699, 53, and your 12-inch ABS invert is 696, 53. That's not over four feet.
No, it doesn't, I was talking about DCB two, I'm, excuse me, DMH two in the cul-de-sac, sir, where the 15-inch existed. Let me look at manhole one, please.
That's your double catch base.
Yeah, we have 699, 50, and then 69, 699, 50, and 695 with a 12-inch, so that would bring it to 696, that would give it three and a half feet of cover, at DMH one at station 3+10. The DMH, station 5+32, double catch base, and the rim is at 688, 84, which is almost 689, the 15th at 684 and a half, if you add 1.25 to that, that would be 685, 75. That gives you three feet, two inches of cover over the top of the pipe.
That'll be a question for our peer review. That'll be a question for our peer review. The slope I noticed is .053 on the 15-inch coming down, and it gets a little less. It doesn't show. It looks steeper on the plan on the 18-inch. But with that slope, do you think that would overwhelm the initial area where the drainage is going to go in before it goes into the detention basin?
Well, you are the chair, I'm sorry. The way that that 15-inch feeds in, it actually comes in, it looks like that the pipes are at a 120, 120, 120 angle dispersment, and we wouldn't be feeding straight into the pipe, so it would shoot straight down into the detention basin. That was really our aim, was to make it so that it would come up into the side of the manhole wall and then be able to go down the pipe. And we lowered the pipe as it exits out, so it wouldn't be a straight velocity across. Would you prefer an extra manhole somewhere in the middle to break slope?
That's up to our peer review, but I think it would be wise. I think you're going to wash out. You're almost a straight line between the 15-inch going up the street and down to your outlet at your head wall, pretty close to a straight line, and maybe 10 degrees off. So that's a straight shot. If you build the inverted of the thing, it doesn't matter if one's lower than the other. It's going to shoot right straight across. And then my next question is, I see that you have soil tests in the roadway. I don't see one perk-
Yes.
I don't see a perk test where you expect your detention basin to drain naturally into the ground to recharge the aquifer.
Again, sir, I'll answer. We tried to, through the health agent, test in the back lots. She wouldn't give us permission to go back there without having a building lot. We did test, however, at lot number five and lot number six and designed, we designed septic systems on those two lots. We did do deep hole tests in the roadway. We didn't realize we were required to do perk tests in the road.
Well, you don't have to do perk tests in the road. You don't have to do perk tests in the road, but you have to do a perk test for every lot of you putting in a septic system. And if you don't have an approved perk test, how do you design a septic system?
We had approved perk tests on the two Form A lots prior to designing the cul-de-sac and designing the subdivision, sir. As I said before, the health agent wouldn't allow us to test on the land back here unless we brought a plan forward to the planning board detailing the lot lines of the proposed subdivision. She refused to take any money from us and allow us to test and/or witness any testing.
Okay, so-
Perhaps now, perhaps now with the directive from the board, she will allow us to go back there and we can take machinery before the next meeting, go back there and run percolation and deep hole tests. I'm a licensed soil evaluator. Licensed soil evaluator, I'm licensed Title V inspector. I can go back there and witness what is in the ground and report to the board, and we can run percolation tests. Could the board so move to ask the board to allow us, based on this design that's been submitted, to go back and test?
Hypothetically, if you had an approval last week to go in and do perk tests, when would you plan to do in the perk test? September, October? Because they're a little late in the season now? There's only a certain amount of time-
We could go out there and perk test.
Pardon me?
We'd go perk next week.
Is that still within the state guidelines?
Certainly is. It's more advantageous to go in September, October, after the trees have been drinking water all year long. Once the leaves start turning brown, the trees don't drink anymore, and the water table starts coming back up again. That's November through December, January, February. Once the spring starts, all the vegetation starts taking the water table down, it makes it more advantageous to perk test in September, August, September. For us to test now would be a more restrictive test. We'd actually have an over-design of any systems, based on results we get at this time of year, sir.
So once you get an approval for these building lots, which it won't be tonight, and you do perform the perk test, do you plan to perform perk tests where your detention basin is without an outlet for it to absorb-
Yes, sir. No, we'll do perk tests there also, sir.
When you do these perk tests, the town will not accept your findings unless it's witnessed by someone from our peer review company, if I'm not mistaken.
Perk test, I'm not sure.
Maybe someone in the health department or-
I have to check with the health department.
I know it has to be witnessed.
That's why we didn't do, that's why we didn't do any perk tests, sir, because the health department would not come out and witness, so I couldn't present any to the board as evidence.
So moving on to your details, bottom of the precast concrete manhole diameter, your adjust frame to grade with brick courses as required, that's a no. The one foot maximum underneath the frame of cover. Underneath your manhole, you have eight inches of, or six inches, I can't really read it on the small plan, I apologize for that, first-class bedding that has to be identified, that's usually three-quarter inch stone.
That's correct.
And then on your sanitary sewer drain trench detail, they're both the same, it's the same detail, the three-quarter inch stone, if I'm not mistaken, the town will require to either come to the crown of the pipe or above the crown of the pipe. That'll probably be pointed out in the peer review. And I didn't understand the precast concrete catch basin detail where you show butyl joint sealant, total width of wall, and pipe openings. It looks like you're going to surround the pipe with butyl sealant.
The butyl sealant should be for the, if this catch basin, or excuse me, if this whole catch basin itself with the four-foot deep sump were to be constructed in the field, there would be construction joints at various areas. That butyl joint sealant would go into that joint that would hold, say, the bottom of the four-foot sump to the rest of the structure. So as the pieces get put together or assembled in the field, the language may be better, the butyl joint sealant would go into those openings. This actually came right out of-
I understand that. You didn't understand my question. Why does the arrow point toward the pipe opening? For butyl sealant?
Since pipe opening cast the plant, since pipe opening cast the plan, I'm not sure why the butyl sealant went up top. It should have stayed down bottom on that joint.
Yeah, it should be a corn steel boot. And you show the width of your diameter crushed stone for your stabilized construction interest, but unless I missed it, I didn't see it identified on the plan of how long that would be. 25 feet, 30 feet? I have no idea.
It should be 25 long by 10 wide.
Well, you showed-
That will be added to the plans if that's sufficient.
Yeah, it looks like it's, on the way it's drawn, it's confusing. But yeah, that would be great. And then-
All right, that would be the numbers we'd use, then.
And then on your utility trench, you say the magnetic tape on top of the conduit, it has to be a certain distance above the conduit, because if you're laying on the conduit, it doesn't do anybody any good. It's got to be at least a foot above the-
That's correct.
That's not what you show. So that would have to be correct.
We could put a fine, we could put a fine sand in there for one foot, sir, and then put the magnetic tape on top of the sand. Thank you for pointing that out. That's correct.
So we cannot make a decision tonight without a peer review that has been sent back to you. I apologize for the delay. I'm not sure what the reasoning is, but this is where we sit. So until we get the peer review and it's given to you and you get a chance to respond, and if the peer review company goes along with your responses, then we can proceed to either approve or disapprove. But certain things are going to have to be approved by the town, like Bill Coyle, like the width of the road, whether or not you use Cape Cod berm. I know it's going to be a private road, but dollars to the dough, it's down the road. It'll turn into a public road, and we're just going to prepare for that. And as far as whether or not there's a sidewalk on Tinker Hill Road, or how wide Tinker Hill Road is, is irrelevant to me, because if they have a wide Tinker Hill Road, now we have a narrow road, it just doesn't make sense. We don't perpetuate future problems. We try to correct them as we go. And if they do widen Tinker Hill Road to 24 feet, let's say, then we have a 24-foot roadway going down to your development, and we have a 24-foot roadway you pull out on, especially if school buses go down there-
Sir, could-
After it's not a private road.
Sir, could I ask, sir, could I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
If we were to extend the roadway to 24 feet plus berm, would that be maybe perhaps sufficient, so we wouldn't need to put the sidewalk? If we were to go to 24, plus two more, it'd be 26?
That's another one that's going to be up to the town, but I believe Bill would probably want at least one sidewalk. I'm not speaking for him. I'm just taking a wild guess.
All right. I just threw it out there to say that if we extended the road, could we maybe perhaps skirt the issue of the sidewalk? That's all.
He may do that. I don't know. That's, something's got to go through the town and the peer review.
I think at this point, I'll have to talk to the developer, but I think that the way that the board is talking, that we'll probably show up with a plan that will show 24-foot wide pavement, plus berm on either side, asking for the modified cape process of water can get onto the roadway instead of being blocked by some type of a straight-up poured berm. So perhaps we will come in with a 24-foot, but it will be the developer's call. I can't make that call, but in lieu of the way that the board is asking questions, I think it'd only be in our best behalf to come in with a 24-foot wide roadway.
That's up to you, but you can tell me if I'm wrong, Adam. But if you redesign the roadway to a 24-foot with a sidewalk and all the details, that has to go before peer review, correct, Adam?
Correct.
Just to make you aware, you just can't walk in with a plan and two weeks ago, here we go.
Understood.
Does anyone else, does anyone else from the board have any further comments?
John, I'd just like to ask, again, what is the grade on the road that goes down for the cul-de-sac?
It's 9%.
Right now, it's almost 9%.
I'll limit to 8%, Ron.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, did you have another comment?
Yes, I did want it to be known that even though it needs to go through peer review, I think he was reading most of the board, but I can say for myself, the road width and one sidewalk is probably something that they should look to design before if they're looking for a favorable vote. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Todd, do you have any further comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually concur with Steve that I would be looking for at least a sidewalk on one side for me to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. What's your name, sir?
My name, first name's Todd, last name's Corinne.
Thank you, Mr. Corinne. I wanted to address you properly. Through the chair, of course.
Nick, do you have any comments?
I do not. Thank you, John.
Does anyone from the public have any further comments? There being none, may I have a motion to continue this hearing to our next meeting? If that's okay with the applicant?
I'll make. Yeah, the applicant agrees with the board action to continue.
John, this is Steve. I'll make a motion to continue to the next hearing.
Thank you. May I have a second?
This is Todd. I'll second.
All those in favor. Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corinne?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, Chair. Aye, it is a vote. When is our next meeting, Adam?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Next meeting, May 11.
Next on the agenda, 7:10 PM, applicant Outfront Media LLC requesting a site plan approval with waivers, 4.5.10.5 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for two billboards on the property located at 385 Southford Street, MAP 33, parcel 87. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
John, this is Nick. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Nick. May I have a second?
This is Steve. I'll second.
All those in favor. Todd?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. The meeting is now open. Is there anyone here at this meeting representing Outfront Media LLC?
Yes, good evening. Mark Bornstein, attorney for the applicant. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Again, Mark Bornstein, I'm an attorney at the law firm about it in Dewey and Worcester. I represent Outfront Media LLC. This evening, I'm also joined by representatives of Outfront Media LLC, Angela Ruffo and David Gannon. As you mentioned, Mr. Chair, before, there's an application for site plan approval for two double-sided digital off-premises signs to be replicated along the Mass Pike at 385 Southford Street, which is known as Dotter Mall. This property is within the regional mall overlay district. Under the Town of Auburn zoning bylaw, the use is permitted as of right, provided you, provided the signs obtain site plan approval and comply with certain requirements in section 4.510.5. This application is being committed in accordance with those provisions. In 2018, a different applicant, Total Outdoor Corp., obtained site plan approval to construct two of these same proposed signs in exactly the same location as proposed by the applicant, but unfortunately, Total Outdoor Corp. was not able to complete that project. That approval in accordance with decision lasts after two years. Now the applicant desires to complete that project as previously permitted, as was approved with the terms and conditions in 2018. As provided in the application materials, the proposed signs will comply with all the requirements in 4.5.10.5. If I may just briefly summarize, the signs are constructed primarily for the purpose of advertising along the Massachusetts Turnpike. They will be constructed in such a way to minimize visibility from other roadways. We've included in the application materials photo simulations and also engineering plans. The signs will at all times be operated and owned and maintained in accordance with applicable law. There are certain types of advertisements that will not be allowed in accordance with the zoning bylaw. The applicant will obtain a security for the removal of the signs. The signs will not exceed 80 feet in height above the grade of the roadway nearest the signs, and shall not be within 300 feet of any residence, as shown on the plan. The signs will comply with the dimensional requirements and not exceed 48 feet in width and 14 feet in height. And the signs will also comply with the electronic message requirements related to the changing of images, transitions, automatic dimming, and the brightness will not exceed the .3-foot candle requirements applicable under Massachusetts law. In addition, we submitted a light study to staff to confirm that the limits of the ambient lighting emanating from the signs. Before you are certain waivers related to the site plan approval, related to certain requirements in section 9.4. Specifically, the applicant requests waivers of the requirement to show site topography, site lighting, landscape, the landscaping, proposed system of drainage and drainage calculations, calculations of the volume earth to be removed, and the extent of the building coverage in open space as in terms of the percentage of the lot, and finally, the abutters. As provided in the materials, the applicant requests these waivers because these signs generally will not impact topography, drainage, open space, or building coverage, no landscaping or sight lighting. or building coverage. No landscaping or site lighting is proposed, and any earth removal will be quite minor. In addition, we submitted a certified list of abutters, which lists all of the abutting properties. Back in 2018, this project, as was proposed, and it's being proposed now, received a negative determination of applicability. We're working with staff to confirm any necessary filing requirements with the Conservation Commission. And finally, last, actually, last night, the Board of Selectmen unanimously authorized the town manager to enter into a donation agreement with the applicant, which will result, once both signs are constructed, in a donation to the town totaling $1 million, and will also result in free advertising for town events, public service announcements, emergency communications on the proposed signs. In addition, the applicant will be donating a digital sign to the town. So it's definitely a win-win for the applicant and for the town of Auburn. So those are my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Does anyone on the board have any questions? I'll go right down the list. Nick, do you have any questions?
John, I'm actually going to recuse myself being an officer of one of the abutters.
Okay. Ron?
I think, John, back when we originally approved it, I see the signature page, and it was you and I and Wendy. And as I recall, they went through all the testing, all that we wanted to make sure that the abutters would not be offended in any way by the light and oncoming traffic, nothing, nobody would be blinded by, you know, bright lights or anything like that. I think, as the applicant stated a few minutes ago, that they substantiated all those tests and redone some of them, and if it's all the same way that it was, I'm okay with it.
Steve, do you have any comments or questions?
Nope. So I do know that you guys approved this previously, so if it's with that, I would have one comment. There is a new abutter, and I believe they sent a message along, not agreeing with this, but I have no other comments.
Todd, do you have any questions?
No comments, no questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, just so you realize that there was a dissenting letter from the people that are across the street from the mall, meaning across Route 12. I'm not even sure how well they'll be able to see it from here, where these are going in, but they thought it might lower their property value. I don't know if that is true. I don't have any history on whether or not these billboards affect property values that are in a large commercial area like that. And then the whole center of Auburn now, Route 12, was all commercial, so I don't know how that would affect the property values in the area. I'm at a loss for that one. But if I'm not mistaken-
John, can you?
Sure, Ron, go ahead.
Can you identify what the property is? It's on the other side. It's on the west side of Route 12?
Yeah, it's the owner of the building of Big Lots.
Okay. So what I would say is that the building that Big Lots occupies is a commercial building. It's adjacent to a large commercial mall district. This is, this bylaw provision was adopted at town meeting. It's, the project has previously been approved by the planning board, and the signage will be facing the Mass Turnpike. It won't be facing directly on the Big Lots property. So I, you know, I imagine every property owner appreciates the status quo, but in this instance, this represents the best use of the property and will provide a much-needed additional benefit to the town of Auburn.
I tend to agree, and the company that had their lawyer from Ohio write the letter is from Boca Raton, Florida. So just putting it out there. I see no hesitation on my part as to continue the approval for this. It was already approved once. The report is, you were kind enough to attach the report, the original report, and you're doing the exact same thing that they were going to do. I often wonder what happened to that project, but now I know. So in light of that, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
John, do I have to take public comment first?
Oh. Is there any public comment, please? There being none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
John, this is Steve. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve. May I have a second?
Ronnie, I'll second it.
All those in favor. Nick? Oh, you can't, you're abstaining. Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corrine?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. The public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to approve as submitted where nothing has changed from the previous applicant?
John, I'll make that one.
Thank you, Ron. May I have a second?
This is Steve. I'll second it.
All those in favor. Todd Corrine?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. I love the name.
Next on the agenda is applicant Erin M. Sherman requesting site plan approval with waivers under 3.2.3.1.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home daycare at 2 Homestead Avenue, Auburn, Mass., map 24, parcel 197. Does anyone on the board have any comments, since we discussed this in the last meeting?
John, if-
Go ahead, Steve.
John, if the applicant is on the phone, I believe Ms. Sherman had mentioned adequate parking in her driveway. I just wanted to confirm what adequate was.
I don't know about, not everyone's going to park in her driveway, thinking about what she had presented last time. I'm not sure if she's on right now. She was earlier on the meeting. She may have had to drop off for one reason or another. I think it's just drop off?
I am here.
Okay. You may answer his question.
Um, I, I do have, like, it's somewhat of a small driveway, but if I pull forward and the person next to me pulls forward, there's room for two other cars behind us, so there can be up to four people in the driveway.
Thank you.
Does anyone else on the board have any?
I have.
John, I would like you to ask the applicant, how many people live in the house and how many vehicles are associated with the house itself?
Good question. Ms. Sherman, would you please respond?
Yep. As of right now, it's just me that has a car. My daughter is going to be 16, but she does not want a car, so as far as I know, I'm going to be the only one in the household with a car.
But isn't there two apartments in the house?
There's two different driveways.
Um, there is, there is another adjoining unit next to me, but they also have their own driveway.
Okay, so that little driveway that you have with the garage is right off Homestead
Um, I- I don't have a garage, so it's, um, it's right across from number three.
Right, so if you go up Homestead Ave from Oxford Street, Ron, you go by the pine trees with the windows at the bottom, they're the first, I believe they're the first building on the right with the Homestead Ave address. It's a duplex.
It's a big, high unit. It's to the left of the, the split wood fence.
Correct.
Oh, so you're not, you're not the Two family?
It's a Two-
The big white house right on the corner of Oxford and-
That one's actually located in Oxford Street, but their driveway is on Homestead.
Oh, so you're in the old Kirk House?
Oh, this is a brand-new building, Ron.
It's, it's a new building that replaced the other house.
The ranch house?
Yes.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. I, I was looking at the, the house on the corner of Oxford and Homestead with that little garage and a little driveway. I had, did not take notice of your driveway, so. How many cars can fit in your driveway?
Um, four cars should be able to fit.
Steve, you said you saw it?
Ron, this is Nick. I actually, I did drive by through the chair, too. I just, I guess I drove by the house a couple of times, and I'm very familiar with the area. And fitting four cars in that driveway, I think would be a challenge. And I guess my bigger concern was, right now, it's probably not as, you know, if there's four cars in there, it's probably doable, but in the wintertime, extra snow around, you know, that sort of thing, plus the traffic on that, on that street alone with Bethel Lutheran, I would be really concerned about cars, you know, just natural inclination to park on the street rather than backing out. Is it possible, Adam, can you confirm if there's a way to put some type of signage on the street where they wouldn't be able to park on the actual street itself?
I'd have to run that by DPDW and the police department. The police department may not have the authority to even, you know, monitor or control that. I don't have any info yet. I'd have to check with them.
Thank you.
Todd, do you have any-
Excuse me, I have public comment as well. Ashley Garcia.
Pardon me? We haven't gotten through the board yet. Let me get through the board, and then I'll allow for public comment, please.
Understood. Thank you.
Todd, do you have any questions or comments?
No, Mr. Chair. I drove by. I looked at the, the width of the roadway and the driveway, and I believe Ms. Sherman said that there would be five, I believe, you know, five children? What's the, the number of children?
Ms. Sherman?
Um, there would probably be four, because my son would count, since he is only nine.
And, and I believe you were spreading out the pickup, the drop-off over a three- or four-hour period?
Yep.
And the same for the pickup?
Yep.
Yeah, so, so based on the size of the driveway and the number of vehicles that'd be coming in, I'm comfortable with this.
Okay. Um, I could just pull my car forward onto the lawn, too, as well.
Oh, no, Ms. Sherman, I'm comfortable with it. I'm supportive.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I guess I just misunderstood.
Ron, do you have any other questions?
No, John, just that if we could condition it that the pickup and drop-off times would be staggered, so that if there's a problem, we can address it.
Yep, that was one of the comments that we, we had brought up in the last meeting, and I think she's willing to comply with that restriction on the, if we approve. Steve, do you have any further comments?
I do not.
Nick, you all set?
Uh, yes.
Is there anyone, anyone from the public that may have a question or comment? If there is, please identify yourself by name and address.
Hi, yes, Ashley Garcia for Homestead Avenue.
Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My comment here is that I'm concerned with the parking as well. I have a identical mirror-imaged condo to Erin. I actually share the property, I, we share a wall essentially, and we share a common ground, being the whole yard surrounding our property. And we have a condo association that details all of those, the little things of what is defined as common space and whatnot. And I know from experience that my driveway is the exact same dimensions as hers, and I own three vehicles, and I can only comfortably park two, and my third has to be pulled up on my front lawn. I'm also concerned with the fact that on days that trash and recycle is out on the street, we have one, like, only one car can basically pass through at a time without the other having to pull off to the side before that initial car passes through. So that's my initial concern, and my second concern being that our yard space, according to our condo association and the yard, the property deed states that it's a shared space, and there was a fence installed, which I know is the requirement for daycares, and I understand that. However, it was never communicated through the condo association, and it was never approved and gone through or about the right way.
Good points. As far as traffic and trash, I can understand your point. And as far as being at a really busy street, I was out there tonight for over half an hour. I measured the street to see how wide it was, and one car passed me. So I'm not really too concerned about traffic. I can understand the parking, but let me, maybe I'm mistaken, but the only parking that would happen would be one car at a time that goes into the driveway to drop the child off and leave, if I'm not mistaken. Staggered drop-offs and pickups, there'd only be one, maybe two cars in the driveway total. Is that your plan, Ms. Sherman?
Yeah, my plan would be to have it staggered so that it would reduce traffic and parking as well. I know for birthday parties, I have been able to pull my car forward and have my person next to me pull forward somewhat, so the front wheels are on the lawn a little bit, and then two cars can park behind us. And it's worked out. As for the yard, I had my lawyer look over the paperwork for the condo agreement, and it stated that the backyard on each adjoining side is exclusive use for that condo unit, but the front yard is common area.
See, we're not privy to what your condo agreement says, and I don't feel comfortable approving or not approving this daycare. I know you still have to get permits from the state until we have something concrete that says you can do what you want to do by putting a fence down the middle. Obviously, your neighbor doesn't feel comfortable about it because, according to her, you put the fence up without consulting her. So I don't know if the back's a common area or not. I mean, you're telling me your lawyer said it, it isn't a common area, only the front is. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know. That's something you guys got to get settled before we can make a motion on this, for me to feel comfortable.
Yeah, I just know that the fence has been up since last November, and I, this is the first I'm hearing about it being an issue.
Be that as it may, be that as it may. You know, I, I don't have control over what your condo association, your HOAs are, anything like that. And in terms of agreement between both parties, that we have the same building and share a wall, I'm not going to approve or disapprove. We're going to need something, an agreement between you two that there's no problem, this, that, that lawyers are all set, that they're, they're comfortable, that it's not a shared backyard, that you can legally put a fence in. I mean, we're well beyond the planning board here at this point. So I am willing to make, to have, ask for a continuance, if you're willing to, Ms. Sherman. If not, then I don't think we can make a vote on this tonight, other than to disapprove. If not, then I don't think we can make a vote on this tonight, other than to disapprove.
I'm willing to go for a continuance.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Ms. Garcia?
Thank you for your time. I just want to also make aware that I have seven children here on the property as well, and with an additional four that she's expecting, I just feel that it's just a bit much for the area.
Like I said, there's got to be an agreement between you two and the homeowners association, condo agreement, whatever, before we do anything with this. I am going to...
Understood.
Go ahead.
Understood. What, what should me and Erin present to you that would be solid proof of what we have come to an agreement on?
I'm not getting into that. That's between you and your lawyers. That's beyond the realm of the planning board agreements and...
Okay, understood. Thank you.
May I have a motion to continue?
John, I'll make a motion to continue.
May I have a second?
This is Nick. I'll second it.
All those in favor? Todd Corain?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
An aye, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote. It will be continued to our next hearing on May 11, 2021. Thanks for your participations.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated, definitive subdivision plan for three building lots, and construction of a roadway and related infrastructure improvements, a property located at 50 and 190 Washington Street, map 34, Lot 4, map 27, parcel 14. I believe the applicant has requested a continuance. Correct. May I have a motion to continue this till the next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
John, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll take Steve's as a motion. I'll take Ron's as a second. All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote. It will be continued to our next meeting on May 11. Under other business, MVP grant application. Adam, you have the floor.
That is currently dead in the water at the moment, where I've been trying to come up with a proposal for the current MVP round. Was going to try to do something regionally. It doesn't seem to be the interest. We're going to pursue another avenue to do some education regarding climate change, so nothing at this time.
All right. Next on the agenda is meeting minutes. They have a motion to approve meeting minutes of March 23, 2021, as amended.
I'll make the motion, John.
May I have a second?
This is Steve. I'll second.
All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote. They're approved. They have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 13, 2021?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. It is a vote. Our next meeting is 5/11/2021. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
John, before we adjourn, can I ask Adam a question? Is the Goddard Park survey still available, or is that closed?
That is still available. The deadline currently is May 1. I may seek to extend that an additional week, but yes, it's currently open.
And the Leesville Pond water quality, it's been moved to May 18. Is that correct?
Correct. The hours are going to be from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That is, it's at the high school. That's the date of the town election. So while you go vote for your municipal, look at officials stop by and learn about water quality.
Thank you. I'm all set. If no one else has anything, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Nick?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote. Meeting is now adjourned. See you in a couple of weeks. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.